One to Tuesday, March seventh. I hope everyone is more awake and vibrant than I am. So far, we have Commissioners Jerry Willie, Commissioner Trace and myself Chair Harrington. I assume our other two members will be joining us in due time.
Yes, Chair Harrington, Commissioner Rogers just sent an email that he's running about fifteen minutes late.
So Commissioner Rogers is running about fifteen minutes late. Okay. So our setup today is timing wise, a little unusual. We'll just be spending nine to ten on board and leadership communication and formal agenda item discussion, which I usually forget nine times out of ten. And then we'll go into our two business meetings and then back here for an exec session. Short lunch break and, oh, normal lunch break. Sorry, I thought it was anyway. And then a full afternoon. So board communication, who would like to kick us off?
Good morning, Chair. Let me take a look here. It's been, you know, busy, just like, just like always.
Wait a minute.
Yes, I had a meeting this past week with Fran Warren. We discussed her ideas about climate action planning, especially in light of our presentation today. One, one thing I'd like to mention is that her group Treekeepers obtained a software technology from ODF that is going to help them count trees. So we'll be, we'll be hearing more about that and the potential applicability for the county. I had a meeting with Brandon Phillips. Brandon provided us feedback on to ErmDak regarding the requirements for getting a, a project on the list. So we have been working with Brandon and LUT to determine if we need to say it sixty-seven percent of the local participants and some other criteria. So it was a really good meeting. He's, he's he's so insightful and really provides us good information about what's happening in our communities. The, I participated in the ESG applicant presentations and those reviews are due back tomorrow. That's a reminder for myself. Thank you very much. And then on Friday night, I attended the Central Cultural, a Central Cultural Gala and along with many Washington County folks. And I was really pleased that Centro did, Maria did a particular call out to our HHS department and Marnie, Kyle in particular, regarding the, the cooperative work between HHS and Centro in relationship to COVID. So it was, it was very nice and well done. They raised, I, I think it was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So it was a good night for them. Yesterday, I had a meeting with Representative Ken Helm and it was my usual check in with him. He talked about things heating up at the Capitol with things speeding up as, I know Ms. Doyle knows, who is here today with us. It's good to see you. He talked about reproductive rights, gun safety and the CHIPS Act and supersiding taking center stage. Yesterday, last night, the Chair and I attended the ACRE meeting and it was the agenda basically covered an overview of the county procurement process. And Susie Foulter did that, did an excellent job. She was focused on supplier diversity work and the effort to bring EDI considerations into the procurement process. We also had an introduction of the strategic plan and the the strategic plan consultant RFP, and that was done by Rachel Fuller. She did a great job there. And we had a discussion on a plan for the ACRE upcoming ACRE retreat. This week I have coffee with Duncan Wang, Councilor at Metro. I have a meeting with John Sarah from TriMet. I have a Central Cultural Board Meeting, Impact Coordinating Committee Meeting, coffee with Dave Perullo from WCVA. I really haven't met him yet and should, so that's why that's on. I have a PAB meeting and next Monday is AOC.
There you go. Light week. Yeah.
Bonbons.
Well, yeah, I think there was a number of internal meetings last week, but probably the most important was, was regarding Council Creek. I met with the representatives from the City of Hillsboro, Corneus and Forest Grove because they were we wanted to have some conversations about who was going to have the ownership of the right, the railroad right of way of Council Creek. And TriMet has stepped up. There were some concerns from the cities and so I met with them and we, I meet with TriMet this week. And what is that person's name? Yeah. But anyway, so yeah, we continue to have conversations and we're getting ready to make the preferred alternative for where that trail is going to be in the middle of the right of way. So stay tuned for that. That'll be a good one. Also, interesting this week, the Hillsboro Hops have a press release tomorrow. They're going to be talking about a new alignment for that where they're going to put the ball fields and it's going to be very cool. And it's going to be a little cheaper, twenty million dollars cheaper. So, so yeah, stay tuned for that. That'll be tomorrow and then next week. If you have any questions on that, you can either call me or of course you can talk to KL at the Hops. He's very open with conversation. This Thursday, I have railroads. I go to Astoria for COPA Northwest Act. I have seven meetings on Thursday, plus the drive to Astoria and back. So it ought to be a good day. Just relax a little. And just what you wanted to hear Catherine squeezed in a trip for the grandson to make it to soccer practice. So there you go. Had to squeeze all that in on Thursday. But yeah, so I've got ALC Transportation and Community Development Steering Committee next week, meeting with Mayor Tim Rosner from Sherwood. And a variety of other individuals on climate issues. Certainly, we have the Washington County Sheriff's Office swearing in next week as well. And then the week after that, I have a meeting with Stimson Lumber, which I have not met before. So that'll be a little forward to that. And what was that, what was that software that you were talking about counting trees?
It's, it's through OD. It's through ODF and I don't have a name for it. I can, perhaps Megan can help us with that.
Yeah.
When you mayor, when you mayor, when you meet with Mayor Rosner, could you, he serves on the Oregon Broadband Advisory Committee?
Okay, that might be, I don't know, did he give you a purpose for the meeting? Cause I didn't see it in the, okay. All right. So yeah, I'll make sure I bring that up. That's a good point. Thank you.
And I know you wanted to meet with him as well because I met with him and mentioned that and you said you'd like to talk with him about broadband.
Paul's been in his court.
I'll tell him to reach out to Daniel and get that on your calendar. Ask him to do that.
We're all going a little slow today. Mr. Fai, good morning.
Good morning. Sorry, I had a little traffic. Commissioner Roger, I just walked in just before.
Highway traffic, was it?
No.
You could fix that.
We're trying, we're trying. At least the, the chunking it out with transit, so. Speaking of TV highway, nothing too significant to report this morning, so I won't be needing my five minutes, Kevin. But just TV highway meeting coming up and lots of conversation about climate budget community, so. But yeah. That's all my update.
Okay. Commissioner Rogers, anything you'd like to share?
A lot. You'll enjoy it. Tim, he's a, Rosner, he's an interesting guy with a very varied background. Been doing some WEA events, finding out what they do entirely. It's kind of interesting. Hodgepodge of things. We had an R one act pre-meeting yesterday. It's no agenda, so nothing to report. I've never seen one with no agenda. They'll come up with one and we'll discuss that a bit. And Jerry, you and I are meeting today with Greg Mun and going once again over all these fund issues.
Fund numbers.
Yeah, there, I mean, some of us get excited about that. They're very weird people.
You have one my favorite color.
Chair Harrington, you always notice purple.
I do. I did forget one thing. I will be attending the press conference, Commissioner Willie, so you'll.
Oh, with the Hops tomorrow? That's good. That'll be a good one.
Anyway, thank you for brightening my day. I'm getting a little tired of the rainy weather, that's all. I keep telling myself April showers brings May flowers. I'll just get through March, that's all. Okie dokie. Yesterday, Monday, was the Metro SHS Oversight Committee meeting. Excuse me, they are finalizing the year one report. We're eight months into year two. So it's an interesting experience for me hearing about what needs to be done after one year, which seemed to me many of those things are already being addressed or taken care of. So it's just an odd experience. But they, they did, as a result of that, I raised that they are positioning their recommendations towards year three, which I think will be helpful. At the, Commissioner Trace mentioned the ACRE meeting last night and I was wondering, Mr. Carr, if you could let us know if, as one of the boards and commissions of the agency, it's the newest one and I'm wondering if summary minutes are needed.
Yes.
I don't think.
I think we've communicated that with them.
Well, we're, we've had, what, six meetings now and I don't think that infrastructure is in play.
Well, we'll look into that. Thank you, Chair.
And then I was wondering a couple of things. ACRE is working, is engaged through Ms. Fuller on the RFP for hiring a consultant for that effort. And I was wondering if the board would like to see that draft RFP at some point. It's, it's unusual in a way for us to see RFPs, but since this relates to such a significant program, I think that might be something that we'll want to take a look.
Well, I think it's also important for the board to understand the relationship between that RFP and ACRE. So I think that discussion, you know, just what the feedback loop is, since we're just starting this type of interaction. So not only the RFP, but how we're working with that, that group.
So to figure out Ms. Angie, the, a good approach for that, whether it's a work session type of thing so we can hear one another's questions or one on ones or whatever, because I know timing is tight. Then the last thing is Erin Doyle, could you come up with this one? In case everyone's busy, so I don't assume that you've had a chance to be up on email and I haven't looked at my email this morning. But NACO reached out to us with regard to a meeting being assembled with with quote unquote, the White House, could just be members of the White House staff relative to the CHIPS Act, particularly needs of counties. And so a few of us have rolled in Ms. Angie and Erin and, and others. And since it's the context come that I've seen through NACO, I'm wondering too if Anscoic has, is in the know on this at all, particularly since they're DC based. And it is, the reason I'm raising it now is that we have to let them know before five PM Eastern Time, which is one PM our time, by two PM our time, sorry. But we have a topic, one to two, so it's like, oh. So I figured I'd raise it in the morning. We have to let them know today about who's going to attend the meeting on Thursday, so.
Yeah, we have not reached out to Vanskay. I think they really want to focus on elected county officials at that meeting. It is with a staff, the staff member in the White House who is point on the CHIPS Act. It's forty-five minutes on Thursday over the noon hour for our time zone. The reason why they've specifically asked for Washington County to attend because of our significant semiconductor portfolio in our economic development portfolio, but in, in specific, the Lamb Research Expansion that's taken place in Sherwood. Matt Craigie from the Economic Development Manager and I are working on putting together some background information on that and would prepare whichever commissioner would attend, but this is a moment in which I think we can really express the needs is not just, you know, investments on the onsite. It's really about building the community that supports around the capacity building infrastructure that feeds sites like that and the overall processes that local governments have to go to, go through to make sure that anyone from Washington County, small or large, that wants to apply for CHIPS Act funding has the fullest ability to, to be successful in bringing those monies into the county.
Well, I know any of us can do this. I'm happy to do it as the chair, but any particular.
I, I would leave it to your schedules, but I do think it's important for Washington County to be in that meeting because it is with the White House and it is an opportunity to really get our needs out there.
I, I'd like to attend to, to understand. I've never had that type of interaction, so that would be.
Information doesn't state that we're limited. But we can check in if there's multiples of you that want to go. I'm sure that more voices welcome.
Well, we're not going to be the only county. It is what, forty-five minutes?
It's forty-five minutes. I don't know how many counties specifically AOC or NACO has reached out to.
I think it'll be interesting to hear what the other counties have to say as well.
But I'm happy to register both of you if you'd like. You said you had nine meetings on Thursdays.
Only seven.
Commissioner's fire.
Meeting with twelve in Seattle exactly that time.
I, I, I need to talk to Brenda. We're working it out. We can't do it.
Correcting things, small. Lamb is in twelve and not.
They're expanding in Sherwood.
Yeah, I know, but.
That's what she.
They're, they're talking about the expansion that Lamb was doing.
You're talking about the principal.
Sorry if I shortened that. That's what I probably.
You were on.
Just to close the loop, my comment, I cannot attend.
Okay, I will get Commissioner Tracy and Chair Harrington signed up and get you both the materials that we put together. We're also working with Clean Water Services, coordinating all of that together.
Okay.
We'll have you prepared. Thank you very much.
You bet, you bet. We'll take Zoom pictures with the White House.
I'll be in the office for that then.
I just had one item as well, one lagging item. At the roundtable, we were chatting real briefly about the NACO Summer Conference. And I wanted to check with your experience last year. I couldn't find my note at the time. I looked into the conference schedule and they don't have any theme or no, no information about the sessions. They just had the schedule for when it is with early bird registration, April seventeenth and then after that. What, how long did it take last year or did you register like just a month or two ahead of time?
I don't remember when I registered last year, how much in advance, but I, I will say, and Megan and I were talking about this the other day because she attended with me last year in Denver. The difference in the format is when you're in DC, obviously you're very focused on legislative actions and issues. The summer one is much more on committees.
Yeah.
So in Denver, I attended the Veterans one and the Public Safety one and a few other ones. But so you get a lot more in-depth information as to what those committees are doing. And if there was like for me, the Veterans one, having conversations with the Disability Aging and Veterans Committee that I'm on. So it's that kind of information. It's, and it's informational. It's not quite as, I guess, educational is what we experienced in.
Really? I was thinking the opposite because. Okay.
I really enjoyed the one in DC this year because of, of the depth of information we were getting on, on some topics that were certainly pertinent to us, like broadband, but and, and the other, the other committees, they do give you a lot of information about what they're doing in their particular counties. Interesting. It's just different.
My interest is really on things related to the county strategic plan work as well as operationalizing equity. So. Okay.
Yeah. Megan, you said I booked in early May and the conference was in June, July. So you get, yeah, I don't.
Okay.
It's, it's a pretty big conference and certainly where they're going to hold it is, is attractive. I mean, that would be one of the reasons I'd like to go there just because I've never been to there and their economic development, they're very active. So.
I'm not nuts about going to Texas, but.
In July.
Irrespective of the weather.
It's awesome.
It's still the state of Texas.
It's just like being in Portland.
It's still the state of Texas.
I don't know how you make that comparison to pizza, but go ahead.
It's in the writing. It's on news. It's similar.
So politically, I'm not intrigued about going to the state of Texas despite having family that live there.
So is anyone else thinking about going? Are you, are you thinking about going?
Well, it's because I was thinking about getting ideas, energy, shot in the arm, however you want to put it, for doing that work well the next three years of my term. So that's why.
Well, let's see, it's March and this is in July, so hopefully, you know, you got a couple more months before you have to make those decisions.
Yeah. I, I was similar to the Chair in, you know, I had really got great information in DC. But there is nothing online. I was just looking as well. There's nothing online about what the conference is going to.
Yeah.
Agenda is, so it's not a little hard to make a decision.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, alrighty. Next, we'll turn to leadership communication and let's not, oh, sorry. On SHS Oversight, I talked about the first year report. They also were they're, they're looking for more information and which I find a little puzzling. But it seems to me like they are asking for information that is increasing the administration weight needs on our staff. So hopefully I'll be wrong there. Then there was a conversation there and also with the tri-county chairs on the Governor's Metro Regional Emergency Management Group and the potential that that is deviating resources that from the three counties have been focused on our SHS homeless work. And the Governor's Office, she and her staff are asking for considerable amounts of information. Our staff is expected to have a report to the Governor by the end of this Friday. Supposedly, I learned that from Tudy, from Chair Smith last night. So I'm frankly, I'm concerned that we have, we have great staff and they've been doing excellent work as we have on our business agenda. But the, this administrative load without getting the resources is very much on my, my mind. Also, it's apparent to me that the Oversight Committee has, is lagging when it comes to information on what the tri-county planning body has done. So I'm not sure how they're going to catch up, so to speak. So we'll see what happens. So sorry, I had those specific notes and forgot to draw on them sooner. That's it for me.
Well, it would seem to me that from the SHS money, we can certainly provide administrative support, can't we?
It's capped and I think we're taking all that we can.
Yeah, that is correct. We are taking the cap at the administrative support level and that was negotiated as part of the IGA process with Metro.
So was the cap too low or what's, what's the issue if you're concerned about that?
That the Governor's Office for executive orders is asking for information. And anyway, yeah.
Administrative responsibilities.
Yes, yes.
Oh, the state has never done that before, have they?
Take it away, Ms. Angie. Keep us out of trouble. Well, keep me out of trouble.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Board, and you did tee up well without knowing it, my leadership update. So I did want to just brief the Board briefly on the Governor's Executive Orders. One of the challenges in the Governor's Executive Orders is the emergency declaration is in essence a framework without the details behind it. The details are continuing to come in and so for, let's compare the order to SHS. We were able to do a significant amount of pre-planning, what some of our needs would be to stand up SHS work. With the Governor's Declaration and Order, we are continuing to learn about the needs that the Governor's Office is asking of staff through us. So it is incredibly challenging for me at this time to bring you like a work plan to react to, to understand what is the needs for direct service delivery and what are the needs for administrative overhead or burden of carrying out the orders. That will be coming in time, but I just want to let you know that's kind of the challenge that we are faced with and the need to respond really very quickly. So this was a priority that in essence was placed on our existing work.
So what I'm looking for is that you and your team are able to keep some accounting. Because Chair Smith is very clear on this. Their, their lead, but he, who's wonderful, has been doing excellent work. He's not able to spend his time focused on the SHS work for Clackamas County because of what the Governor's Office is asking for. And so I think we have to keep track of things like that because Metro and the Oversight Committee can't expect us to do both.
I was gonna say, who's the IGA with and couldn't we make, I mean, realizing if Friday is truly the deadline, it's too late to do this, but certainly going into the future, couldn't they make a little asterisk and say, except for the Governor's Executive Orders or above the cap?
Well, so from a timing perspective, the work plan template and the funding requests are due on Friday and March tenth. That's this Friday. We just had a meeting with the, with the office last Friday, March third. So that's how quickly the, these work plans need to be implemented. Once we have the work plan and template complete, we will forward that to the board. Once we have the um, work plan and template complete, we will forward that to the board. Um, and at this point, we've been um, given the direction from the Governor's uh, um, team to ask for everything I de- everything identified as a need, even though our needs will outweigh the avail- available funds from the Governor's Office. So I'm not quite sure how that's going to work.
Our governors hijacked our staff to do this work. Um. So we need to keep full accounting to charge the state for it.
Laughing because I'm saying, well, we can, it's like we used to say, well, you can send me a bill.
Well, we will need to because this is not the SHS levy. This is separate and distinct from the SHS levy.
Yep. And we didn't have, we didn't do this work before because we didn't have money to pay for it. So that's my point.
I'm certainly not as adverse, Don, as maybe others, but what if you don't do the work?
Or we don't make the deadline?
Okay.
Pretty short deadline.
We haven't asked that question directly.
I, 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 I have shocked myself by having such thoughts.
Well, it's not a bad thought if you can't perform.
Or if the timeline is too short, you just say, sorry, okay, we, we're going to file for an extension. How's that? You start terminal.
I understand those.
Let me take those questions back to the team and follow up with the board on that.
It also has to be weighed against the value to us for.
Well, we're chasing after the potential of maybe funding. It feels very mythical to me.
Hmm.
So. But we know how it was positioned to us last week. So.
Um, so switching gears to announcement, um, I do want to welcome Angelita Jackson. She is joining Washington County as her interim Chief HR Officer. Um, in the future, she will be attending one of your board's uh, leadership updates um, so that she can in person introduce herself. She has worked as an executive in HR for more than thirty years in both the private and public sectors. Um, and as I can, um, she currently serves as an interim HR consultant with Strategic Government Resources and has served i- as an HR director in numerous um, local governments. She is also the co-founder, excuse me, the founder of IHR4 Solutions, a human resources consulting firm. So really pleased with um, um, with her joining the team at this critical time. One of the mottos that she carries um, with her uh, for her life is never grow weary of doing good. So I think that's a, that's a good motto to carry forward here at Washington County. And that concludes my update.
Thank you. Mr. Carr.
Harrington, I wanted to um, give you another update on the, the cleanup of Mr. Burshard's property on Sellers Road. Um, they are actually out there cleaning up. Uh, on Thursday and Friday, they took twenty-three tons of material out of the property.
Stop.
Twenty?
Twenty-three tons?
Forty-six thousand pounds. That's on Thursday and Friday. Um, that's about two dump trucks full. And there's, they're continuing the work this week. It's a little bit more detailed this week because there's, they have to hand, go through it by hand now. There's uh, containers of liquids that are not identified, so they want to make sure everything is disposed of properly. Um, I, I, Brad Anderson and uh, Rob Bovette from my team were out there on Friday ruining their shoes in the mud. Um. Although Brad had been there before, so he knew to wear boots. Uh, uh, I wanted to recognize Tom Eggleston, who is running this whole thing, and as you know, does a tremendous job. And then Deputy uh, Matt Andreessen was there and Mr. Burshard uh, was somewhat upset and uh, Deputy Andreessen did a great job of de-escalating the situation and handling it professionally and deserve a lot of credit for the way this is being handled. Uh, so it's, it's a multi-disciplinary effort from several folks and a lot of work, but um, the community obviously was suffering with that much waste adjacent to their property. So the county is doing the right thing. Uh, and it was, it's taking a lot of folks to do it. And that's the end of my update.
Thank you for that, Tom. That's uh, that's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
So.
Varmint.
Oh, yeah.
That was so.
The poor neighbors have dealt with a lot of challenges.
The neighbors thought there might be a new breed of rats coming out of that.
What, what was the makeup of the debris?
I don't know. There, I understand there were a lot of tires. Uh, and that's one of the challenges. Um. The owner does believe that all this stuff is valuable. There's old cars and things and so convincing him.
But the old cars were not part of the cleanup, correct?
I, I'm not sure. I think that they, they were in fact, that's one of the challenges the team has is they have to uh, carefully comply with the court order.
Yeah.
And only take things that track.
Out of curiosity, is there any awareness as to what the liquids might be? We don't want environmental.
I, I, I don't know Commissioner Rogers, but we, I, the, we have a consult, uh, we have a contractor out there doing this work and so, and knowing Tom Eggleston a little bit. I, this is, I know that he's going to make sure that this stuff is disposed of properly.
Especially this, making sure the chair, if there's going to be some press release because there's some spillage and some toxic materials, they ought to know real quick.
Yeah, our team is, I think our team is very good and I, I, I don't expect that to be the case.
Okay. Yeah, and we've been involving uh, DEQ in this process. I don't know if they're out there right now.
Yeah, I don't know.
I thought DEQ was going to be the ones responsible for removing the vehicles. Um, and I hadn't heard if that was actually going to happen. I mean, we're not talking about a few vehicles. We're talking in the teams.
Yeah.
So a pretty good collection of vehicles as well out there. Uh, so. Yeah.
Well.
Thank you for that.
Just wanted to let you know the team is working for, for a tremendous job.
I wish them sunny days.
Yes.
Your plug is.
Absolutely.
Yes. Alrighty, well, onward to Clean Water Services.
Good Chair Harrington, good morning. Board of Clean Water Services, just two announcements. Uh, the first one is that CWS is hosting another Clean Water Services Essential Session on four twenty-two, which is Earth Day. And it'll be at Durham for newly appointed CWA members and any local um, electeds that want to come to that um, session. The board's welcome. Mark will send some details in case you want to have them send some remarks for them. The second one is interesting. So Jared Camer is at the Water Reuse Symposium in Atlanta right now, where he's been a invited speaker. But he's going to virtually testify before Representative Helms in the House Ag Land Use and Natural Resources Committee this afternoon in support of water reuse and what's trying to be accomplished. So Aqua asked um, for Jared to testify and he has so much passion for water reuse, but we thought that was sort of a fun um, to that, that he's back in Atlanta giving a, a talk, but he'll be here in Oregon. So. Thank you.
What our technology allows us to do these days, it's amazing. Pretty terrific. Great. Well, uh, for a change, I won't forget to uh, inquire about our formal agendas uh, today. Well, I thought I had it here somewhere. Myself, I know I have it on my computer. If we have the agenda handy, I know we have the um, thank you. Uh, I know we have a couple of proclamations. So there will be a, a number of speakers and present- presenters for the Developmentally Disabled Awareness Month. Uh, and we'll go down on the floor after their presentation for a photograph. And then uh, stay down on the floor uh, to get a, a picture with Mr. Munn. And he's going to present the um, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Uh, then uh, we'll go back up to the dais and there will be a presentation on the ARPA anniversary. And what I'm really trying to get to is down in the, the action section. Uh, we'll have the housing uh, services, shelter, capital fund award. So we've not done that before. Uh, so this is part of that, you know, uh, growing capability, growing sites. So that's, that's a big milestone. Uh, so I wanted to make sure I checkpointed that. So. And we've got the Housing Authority meeting just before that as well. So. Are there any questions or anything that folks have any concerns for the formal agenda?
I just think it's really good that we're recognizing accounting services. To say. We hide in the bushes a lot, you know, so it's good to be recognized.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, Roy? Good job, Greg.
Can't make a good bean soup if you don't have the beans and the bean counters.
That's right.
Yeah, I'd like to see our counters in soup.
Oh.
Just easy.
Yeah.
I was looking at the consent agenda. It's a, it's a full consented agenda as well.
Yeah. Is there anything else before we pause the work session and head to our business meetings? No? Okay, well, uh, we'll see you at ten o'clock in the auditorium. Thank you.